May I ask delegates to please take their seats so we can begin? I declare the 11th emergency special session of the General Assembly resumed. Before proceeding any further, I would like to remind members that due to the temporary closure of the east side emergency doors, in the event of a fire or an emergency which requires an evacuation, please use the west side emergency doors and the stairway next to the elevator banks. Those in the third and fourth balconies, please use the stairway next to the elevator banks. Members will recall that in paragraph 16 of its resolution ES-11/1, the Assembly decided, quote, "to adjourn the 11th emergency special session of the General Assembly temporarily and to authorize the President of the General Assembly to resume its meetings upon request from member states." In this regard, I should like to draw the attention of delegations to document A/ES-11/4, which contains a joint letter dated 21 March 2022 from the permanent representatives of Antigua and Barbuda, Canada, Colombia, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Estonia, France, Georgia, Germany, Guatemala, Italy, Japan, Latvia, Lithuania, Mexico, Panama, Poland, Republic of Korea, Turkey, Ukraine, the United Kingdom, and the United States of America to the United Nations addressed to the President of the General Assembly requesting the resumption of the 11th emergency special session of the General Assembly. I intend to conduct the proceedings of this meeting in accordance with the rules of procedure of the General Assembly and the past practices of its emergency special sessions. The Assembly will now resume its consideration of Agenda Item 5 entitled, quote, "Letter dated 28 February 2014 from the Permanent Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations addressed to the President of the Security Council" in document S/2014/136. In this connection, the Assembly has before it two draft resolutions in documents A/ES-11/L.2 and A/ES-11/L.3. Rule 91 of the Rules of Procedure of the General Assembly reads as follows: Quote, "If two or more proposals relate to the same question, the General Assembly shall, unless it decides otherwise, vote on the proposals in the order which they have been submitted. The General Assembly may, after each vote on a proposal, decide whether to vote on the next proposal," end quote. Therefore, the Assembly will consider the draft proposals in the order in which they have been submitted. This means that the draft proposal that was submitted first contained in document A/ES-11/L.2 will be considered first. Excellencies, I wish to make the following statement on behalf of the President of the General Assembly. The security situation in Ukraine has deteriorated rapidly following the launch of the Russian military offensive on 24 February 2022. Armed violence has escalated in various regions of Ukraine, including the capital city of Kyiv. The intense military escalation and rapid expansion of the conflict throughout the country has resulted in severe loss of life, injuries, misery, and mass movement and displacement of the civilian population throughout the country and to neighboring countries, as well as severe destruction and damage to civilian infrastructure and residential housing. According to UN data, around 3.56 billion people have fled Ukraine and 6.5 million have been displaced within the country since February 24. In other words, around one in four of Ukraine's 44 million population has either fled the country or has been internally displaced since the war began. Essential services such as water, electricity, heating, and emergency health and social services are under severe strain, and people's access to health care continues to be limited by growing insecurity and shrinking humanitarian space. This is projected to deepen and expand humanitarian needs among millions of Ukrainians and other community members. People on the move are extremely vulnerable to numerous potential health and protection risks, while local capacities in host communities receiving growing numbers of displaced people are already stretched to the brink. Allowing for safe and unhindered access to humanitarian assistance for those in need in Ukraine, including women, children, the elderly, the disabled, and humanitarian personnel is the need of the hour. I would again reiterate my call to all parties to respect international law and international humanitarian law, end quote. I now wish to give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine to introduce Resolution
Mr. Chair, distinguished delegates. A month ago, on the 23rd of February, the General Assembly held the debate on the situation in the temporarily occupied territories of Ukraine. It was just a few hours before the Russian unprovoked and unjustified war against my country started. As Ukraine's Foreign Minister Dmitry Kolba said from this rostrum at that meeting, and I quote, "We need swift, concrete, and resolute actions. A new type of action by the UN and international community which is relevant to the level of threat we all, not just Ukraine, face today because of Russia's aggressive course. We are critical. We are at critical juncture in world history, and our actions today will define it for decades to come," end quote. And tomorrow will be another symbolic date, a month since the lives of millions of Ukrainians were split in two parts: a peaceful past full of joy and positive plans, and the present with war, suffering, death, and destruction. Thousands of Ukrainians have lost their lives over this month, young and old, women and men, civilians and military. They died because Russia decided to attack. Attack Ukraine. Attack peace. Attack all of us. Every day of the Russian war against Ukraine aggravates humanitarian situation further and further. In a nutshell, it has already reached the level of humanitarian disaster. People are starving to death in the occupied or besieged areas. People are being killed in their attempt to flee from conflict-affected areas. Cities are razed to the ground by shelling and airstrikes. Neighboring countries are stretched to their limits of accommodating millions of Ukrainian refugees. These developments have prompted a cross-regional group of two dozen states that represent all regions to work together on a draft resolution entitled "Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine." I would like to repeat: two dozen states from all regions. The text under A/ES-11/L.2 is a result of a collective and informed effort. And here I would like to express special thanks to France and Mexico for their dedicated leadership during these long days of consultations. While clearly pointing to the root cause of the humanitarian catastrophe, it is an action-oriented text that places the main focus on the urgent needs to alleviate the humanitarian suffering on the ground. Immediate cessation of hostilities by the Russian Federation, in particular any attacks against civilians and civilian objects; protection of civilians including humanitarian and medical personnel, journalists, persons in vulnerable situations, foreign nationals, notably students; ensuring safe and unhindered passage for all civilians fleeing armed conflict and violence; putting an end to the practice of sieges of cities of Ukraine, in particular the city of Mariupol; respect for international humanitarian law, human rights law, and refugee law. The intention of the initiators and cast sponsors of the draft resolution is to ensure the words are translated into prompt actions on the ground. It will be critical to prevent a spillover effect for the entire world. That is why the text also mentions the impact of the conflict on food security globally, in particular in the least developed countries, as well as energy security. We ask all those who stand against the war to vote with us, to vote for the draft entitled "Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine." It will send a powerful message aimed at contributing to a breakthrough in humanitarian action on the ground and making the aggressor stop its unprovoked war. We are encouraged by the growing number of countries who resolutely support as cast sponsors this truly cross-regional draft that gives the Assembly a chance to speak with a powerful voice, so needed to give peace a chance. Ladies and gentlemen, now let me ask you how many times in this hall you have felt a sense of apathy in the air, at best that your action is not essential, that staying on the so-called safe side is the best option, that there are others who will act and deal with the matter? Basically, it is diffusion of responsibility. When the more onlookers there are, the less personal responsibility individuals will feel to take action. It is, ladies and gentlemen, the bystander effect, or bystander apathy, which is a social psychological theory that states that individuals are less likely to offer help to a victim when there are other people present, like on a busy street in a megapolis. But let me remind you that the General Assembly should not be ruled by the street violence psychology. After all, we are here, United Nations, and that is why this morning eight dozens countries have already cast sponsored the draft. We are not bystander nations that diffuse responsibility. We do not trivialize murder. We do not make a taboo of murderers' identity, anonymizing it. We do not fall victims of any Stockholm syndrome, sipping coffee with a serial killer in the delegates lounge or in a Vienna café. Or do we? Think about it when you vote during this emergency session. I call upon all responsible members to support the draft, and I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and greetings to the President of the General Assembly for agreeing to reopen the session and for his message that you passed on this morning. Colleagues, I speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states, the candidate countries from North Macedonia, Montenegro, and Albania, the country of the stabilization and association process, and potential candidate Bosnia and Herzegovina, and the EFTA countries Iceland, Liechtenstein, and Norway, members of the European Economic Area as well as Ukraine, the Republic of Moldova, Georgia, and Monaco, San Marino, and Andorra align themselves with the statement. Mr. President, colleagues, as we speak, the inhabitants of Mariupol have been under siege for 24 consecutive days. They are bombed day and night. Almost 90% of the city's residential areas have been razed to the ground. The humanitarian situation is catastrophic. Russia is blocking the delivery of humanitarian assistance and evacuation of the civilian population to other parts of Ukraine. It is heartbreaking to see yet another humanitarian catastrophe unfolding before our eyes, adding to the dire humanitarian situations identified by the UN in Afghanistan, Syria, Yemen, Ethiopia, Sudan, not to mention other parts of the world. Instead of joining international efforts to heal existing wounds, Russia is opening new ones. Nearly every day, we witness Russian attacks against Ukraine's civilian population and infrastructure. We have heard about attacks on evacuees escaping besieged cities, shelling of innocent people queuing to buy their bread. We have seen shelling of more than 500 schools, at least 52 hospitals, more than 1,500 residential buildings, and a theater in Mariupol sheltering civilians, including many children. We have received reports of cluster munitions being used in populated areas. In less than a month, 10 million people have fled their homes. More than 12 million are in direct need of humanitarian assistance. Deliberate attacks on civilians are shameful, reprehensible, and constitute serious violations of international humanitarian law. The EU continues to advocate full compliance with international humanitarian law and to avoid civilian suffering. On the 2nd of March, this Assembly, adopted by an overwhelming majority, a resolution deploering in the stronger terms the Russian aggression against Ukraine, condemning all violations of international humanitarian law and demanding the immediate withdrawal of Russian troops from Ukrainian territory. Russia has done nothing to implement this resolution. On the contrary, it has intensified its hostilities, causing further devastation and suffering. Mr. President, these are dark days, not only for Ukraine and its people, but for the world in its entirety. We are witnessing the fastest-growing refugee crisis in Europe since World War II. More than 3.6 million people have fled Ukraine to neighboring countries. At least another 6.5 million are internally displaced within Ukraine. In addition to the millions of Ukrainian citizens, there are also thousands of people from other parts of the world: students, workers, migrants, who are caught in the conflict. Many have been instrumentalized by Russia and its disinformation campaign. Destruction and displacement is happening on a huge scale. The numbers of displaced people have exceeded in four weeks the numbers displaced in four years by the terrible conflict in Syria. EU member states have kept their borders open for everyone fleeing the war. We are committed to provide safety and shelter for all people fleeing Ukraine, regardless of nationality, ethnicity, religion, or race. Beyond Europe, this conflict is putting millions of people at risk of food insecurity, in particular in the least developed countries, often adding to existing humanitarian hardships. In this regard, we support the Secretary General's initiative to set up a global crisis group to identify concrete measures in addressing these risks. The EU and its member states are also responding to the food insecurity caused by the conflict. The European Commission has today announced new measures to address global food insecurity, not least in the Sahel and the Lake Chad basin. The EU is actively mobilizing the international community to urgently scale up multilateral action, also beyond humanitarian assistance. This includes ensuring that UN bodies with mandates relevant to food security are able to take the necessary actions. Food security is central to FAO's mandate. For example, it has a key role to play in analyzing and addressing the impacts that Russia's invasion of Ukraine is having on international food systems and in preventing further deterioration with a particular focus on protecting the most vulnerable. We are working to ensure that food security is integrated in the efforts of the whole UN system, including the UN Security Council and this General Assembly. This is in addition to urgent humanitarian assistance that the EU and its member states are providing. that the EU and its member states are providing to the Ukrainian population. We have committed significant funding to the UN Humanitarian Flash Appeal and Regional Refugee Response Plan for Ukraine, and we have activated the European Civil Protection Mechanism. So far, the EU Commission has announced 500 million euros in emergency aid, of which over 93 million in humanitarian aid to Ukraine and Moldova this year. And the EU has been a solid supporter of Ukraine over the last years. Since 2014, the EU and its member states have provided 2.4 billion euros in humanitarian emergency and early recovery assistance to Ukraine. Over the past eight years, the EU has addressed and supported the needs of vulnerable people, including women, children and the elderly, also in eastern Ukraine, on both sides of the contact line. Our principal humanitarian assistance benefits vulnerable people living on both sides of the front line. And let us make it clear, this will continue. I also want to stress here that in parallel to our assistance to Ukraine, we will continue to provide assistance to people fleeing other conflicts around the world or affected by other crises, as we already do in Yemen, Ethiopia and the Sahel. The Russian aggression against Ukraine will not reduce our attention from other pressing crises. Mr. President, in light of the tragedy that is unfolding, the General Assembly has to take its responsibility and to address this humanitarian catastrophe and urgently call on Russia to respect the basic principles of international humanitarian law that applies to everyone. First, civilians and civilian infrastructure must never be targets. This includes hospitals, schools, water and electricity infrastructure, no matter where they are. Second, sustained, unimpeded humanitarian access must be granted in both directions. Civilians fleeing areas of violence must be able to do so, and humanitarian convoys must be granted access to enter conflict areas. It is urgently needed to establish safe passage, especially from besieged cities such as Mariupol, to prevent humanitarian catastrophe. Humanitarian and medical workers should be able to work safely. We need for the General Assembly to act, as the Ambassador of Ukraine just said. We need a General Assembly resolution which accurately reflects the situation and its causes, which urges the respect of the most basic humanitarian principles that all states have signed up to. We also need the General Assembly to come together in unity and solidarity with the people of Ukraine and in defending the UN Charter and international humanitarian law. The resolution presented by Ukraine and a large cross-regional group of countries addresses not only the most acute situation in Ukraine, but also calls for protection of all those fleeing the war without discrimination. It also addresses the serious global consequences of Russia's attack on a major agricultural-producing country such as Ukraine, with risks for food security in many countries, including developing countries. Mr. President, Russia must stop this war and end this unnecessary suffering. The European Union reiterates the demand of this General Assembly that Russia cease its military action and withdraw all forces from the entire territory of Ukraine immediately and unconditionally, in line with the resolution passed on the 2nd of March in this General Assembly and in line with the order of the International Court of Justice of the 16th of March. We stand in solidarity with the millions of people affected by the Russian war of aggression against Ukraine. I thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Netherlands, speaking on behalf of the Benelux countries.
Mr. President, I deliver this statement on behalf of the Benelux countries Belgium, Luxembourg and my own country, the Netherlands. The Benelux countries align themselves with the statement just made by the European Union. And I thank you, Mr. President, for reconvening this emergency special session and for your statement. Mr. President, at the outset, let me repeat once again that the Benelux countries are unwavering in their support for Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders and its democratic freedom. We condemn in the strongest terms the aggression by the Russian Federation against Ukraine. As we today discuss the humanitarian situation in Ukraine, let's be clear that Russia alone is responsible for this war and humanitarian catastrophe it has caused. And it should stop immediately, as ordered by the International Court of Justice on the 16th of March with binding effect, and I quote: "The Russian Federation shall immediately suspend the military operations that it commenced on 24th of February 2022 in the territory of Ukraine." There is no doubt about what needs to be done and needs to be done immediately. Because, Mr. President, the Russian war against Ukraine has resulted in untold suffering for the Ukrainian people. That's where our focus is today, to put an end to that. The UN has verified that civilians are being attacked. We see images of women and children fleeing their homes, of thousands of people sheltering in metro stations. WHO has reported 43 attacks on hospitals, and even a maternity ward wasn't safe. As we speak, in Mariupol, hundreds of thousands of people remain trapped. They fear for their lives every day, every hour, every minute. They are stopped from moving to safer places and are denied access to the assistance that they so badly need. Humanitarian corridors are being negotiated, but agreements are violated time and time again. 12 million people in Ukraine are directly affected by the war. Some are not able to leave. Millions are deprived of food, electricity, water and healthcare. People are traumatized and need mental health care and psychosocial support. Millions more have fled the violence, 600,000 people, over the past four days alone. And people continue to do so every single day, causing the largest refugee crisis in Europe since the Second World War. We commend the neighboring countries of Ukraine, including Poland, Romania, Hungary, Slovakia and Moldova, for welcoming the millions of refugees and for stretching their reception capacity to its limit. Mr. President, my second point is to remind ourselves that another consequence of the Russian war in the world's breadbasket with specific attacks on agricultural assets is rising food insecurity. Not only in Ukraine, but in other parts of the world as well. People in already extremely vulnerable situations in Yemen and the Horn of Africa are fearing they might not be able to feed their families anymore. And there is a real danger of growing food and energy prices causing more economic and social instability around the globe, putting more people at risk. Importantly, the Security Council in 2018 adopted Resolution 2417, exactly to highlight the link between armed conflict and conflict-induced food insecurity. Amongst others, it calls on all parties to refrain from attacking objects indispensable to the survival of the civilian people. This resolution was adopted unanimously and is now more relevant than ever. Mr. President, my third point is on international humanitarian law. We now witness grave violations of international humanitarian law, such as obstruction of aid and attacks on civilian infrastructure on a daily basis. And so, we are faced with another crisis, one of disrespect for the important gains in international law we have fought so hard for since the end of the First World War. From the Geneva Conventions and the first additional protocol thereto, to the Charter of the UN, all of these norms are being disregarded and trampled upon. We cannot afford to continue going down this road and see principles of humanitarian law rapidly becoming meaningless for the people they are supposed to protect and worthless for all of us that signed on to them. That is why the aggressors should be named and held accountable. Let's be clear, the perpetrators of these crimes should realize that they are being watched and that evidence is being compiled with a view to their prosecution for the crimes they are committing. Mr. President, the Benelux countries stand ready to support the victims of the war in Ukraine. So we call upon all member states to support the cross-regional resolution entitled Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine that has just been presented. We also urge all donors to immediately pledge unmarked, flexible and additional funds, because we cannot look away from other crises that require our assistance, crises that are already at risk of being exacerbated by the war in Ukraine. Mr. President, there is a solution to stop this humanitarian crisis. There is only one party that chose to start this war. The same party can also decide to stop it now. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Netherlands. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Lithuania, speaking on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Norway, Sweden and my own country Lithuania. All of our countries align with the EU statement. On the 2nd of March, 141 countries voted for the resolution entitled Aggression Against Ukraine. We deplored in the strongest terms the aggression by the Russian Federation against Ukraine in violation of Article 2, Para 4 of the Charter, and demanded that the Russian Federation immediately cease its use of force against Ukraine and to refrain from any further unlawful threat or use of force against any member state. We also demanded that the Russian Federation immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw all of its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Instead, Russia has continued the war against Ukraine, causing extensive human suffering and many civilian casualties, including those of children. The devastating humanitarian consequences and rapidly deteriorating situation are obvious. When millions of people globally stand on the brink of famine, we are deeply worried about the impact of the invasion and the risk of increased food insecurity. This is an unprovoked act of aggression, and Russia, together with its accomplice Belarus, are responsible for the tremendous suffering inflicted upon the Ukrainian people. Russia's unprovoked aggression against Ukraine grossly violates international law and the principles of the UN Charter and undermines European and global peace and security. All parties in the armed conflict must comply with international law, including international humanitarian law, and ensure protection of civilians in this respect. Russia's disregard for international humanitarian law and attacks against civil populations and civilian infrastructure are appalling. Civilians must not be targeted. Russian forces' attacks on healthcare and schools are serious violation of international humanitarian law and must cease immediately. Since the General Assembly passed its resolution, the list of alleged war crimes and reported atrocities have mounted. Russia has bombed civilian infrastructure and objects, including hospitals, medical facilities, schools, residential buildings and churches. Russia has continued shelling peacefully densely populated cities. Several, like Volnovacha and Mariupol, have been almost completely destroyed. According to the reliable sources, Russia is not only using cluster munitions, but also thermobaric and phosphorus bombs in populated areas. These are not standalone cases, but an illustration of the systematic manner in which Russia is waging its war on Ukraine. These inhumane and immoral actions embody Russia's disregard for the international law, including international humanitarian law and the principles upon which the UN is based. More than 10 million people, nearly one quarter of the population of Ukraine, have been forced to flee their homes. 3.6 million people left Ukraine, mostly women and children. We commend those neighboring countries that have kept their borders open to those seeking protection outside Ukraine without discrimination. Current obstructions of humanitarian access and rapidly changing frontiers, frontlines hinder the delivery of desperately needed humanitarian assistance. Russia also has an obligation to allow rapid, safe and unhindered access for humanitarian actors to reach all those in need of lifesaving assistance, including food, water, healthcare, protection and shelter, wherever they are. Safe voluntary passage for civilians and humanitarian actors must be guaranteed and respected, including through the opening of humanitarian corridors. Mr. President, last week, the International Court of Justice explicitly ordered Russia to stop its so-called military operation. An investigation has also been opened by the ICC prosecutor. There will be no impunity for violations of international law, including war crimes and crimes against humanity. All perpetrators must be brought to justice. This is necessary to ensure justice for victims, but also to prevent and to deter future violations. Ensuring accountability is an integral part of our obligation to respect and ensure compliance with international humanitarian law. Mr. President, we encourage all member states to vote for the Resolution L2 on the Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine. In doing so, we send a clear message to Russia. We demand respect for international law, including international humanitarian law. We demand that every effort is taken to protect civilians at all times, wherever they may be. We demand safe, timely and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance and to ensure the safety and security of humanitarian personnel. We demand safe humanitarian passage for those who decide to leave voluntarily and protection for those who decide to stay. Agreements for safe humanitarian passage must be respected fully. But first and foremost, we demand that Russia ends the war now. Russia, with Belarus as an accomplice, bears the sole responsibility for the war and the humanitarian crisis. I wish to conclude by expressing our admiration and deep solidarity with the people of Ukraine, who are fighting not only for their country, but for universal democratic values. Your courage is truly an inspiration for us all. We stand with you. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Lithuania, speaking on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
President, colleagues, a few days ago, we learned that our Western partners asked for a resumption of the emergency special session on the situation in Ukraine. It's no secret that they did this in order to put to the vote their own draft of a supposedly humanitarian resolution at the General Assembly. The reason, allegedly, is that the humanitarian resolution would not pass at the Security Council. I would like to, with all responsibility, say to you that in acting such a way, our Western colleagues look disingenuous. The Council has every opportunity to adopt such a necessary document for humanitarian workers. It will be put to the vote at the Security Council and contains absolutely all appropriate elements for this type of resolution: a call for a ceasefire and establishing humanitarian pauses in order to allow for the safe evacuation of civilians without discrimination on any basis; and a call also for attacks not to be waged on critical infrastructure; a call not to place heavy weaponry in densely populated areas and residential areas and ensuring the protection of humanitarian and medical personnel; due protection for those injured and ill; humane treatment of prisoners; and protection of civilians, particularly women and children. Moreover, it is no secret if I say that all, or even nearly all of these elements we took from a Franco-Mexican draft humanitarian resolution previously submitted to the Security Council. In principle, it suited us also, and we were ready to work on it. That was until our Western colleagues insisted on introducing blatantly anti-Russian elements, without which the draft was not necessary. It does not seem to bother them, at the same time, though that no humanitarian resolution from a Security Council contains a political assessment; it has no place there. Also, this aforementioned Franco-Mexican draft, full of anti-Russian wording, ended up at the General Assembly. Colleagues, this is how we have found ourselves at another political anti-Russian show, set this time in an allegedly humanitarian context. Statements that we have already heard today leave no doubt as to this. If our Western colleagues at the Security Council were really concerned about the humanitarian situation on the ground, then they have an opportunity to show this and vote for our humanitarian draft resolution at the Security Council. Thus, the Security Council would be fulfilling its role. The co-sponsors of the Franco-Mexican draft had a different aim: add to the GA text voted on the 2nd of March with another anti-Russian document. Let me be clear that this scenario will make a resolution to the situation in Ukraine more difficult, because more likely it will embolden Ukrainian negotiators and would nudge them to maintaining the current unrealistic position, which does not relate to the situation on the ground, nor to the need to tackle the root causes, which meant that Russia had to start, almost exactly a month ago, its special military operation in Ukraine. I’d like to recall that we started this operation in order to stop Kiev regime’s eight-year war against civilians in the Donbass, which has already cost the lives of more than 10,000 people, including women and children. The war that our Western colleagues did their best not to notice or pointed the finger for it at Russia, or even to the people of the Donbass themselves. We took this extremely difficult step, having exhausted all peaceful and diplomatic means of resolving the conflict in the Donbass, only after Kiev unambiguously and on many occasions reaffirmed that it did not intend to fulfill the Minsk agreements as approved by the Security Council resolutions, and only after the Western backers of Kiev, who were behind the Maidan coup in 2014, affirmed that they did not intend to rein in the Ukrainian authorities. Only after the President Zelensky didn’t only reaffirm the wish of Ukraine to join NATO, which is a direct threat to the vital interests of our country, but also the threat to have an impact on the nuclear-free status of Ukraine, only after Ukraine significantly stepped up its shelling of residential areas of LPR and DPR, which is still going on, and when Russia received influxes of refugees. In order for Ukraine to no longer pose a threat to Russia, it needed to carry out its denazification and demilitarization. This was the main purpose of our military operation. At the same time, we stated initially that we would not target civilian objects, and having understood this, Ukrainian nationalists and radicals, who understood that sooner or later they would have to be held accountable for their crimes committed over the last eight years, they started to use civilians as human shields and started to place heavy weaponry in residential areas and not allow people to leave cities along humanitarian corridors. And it is this, which caused the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. Indeed, in order to alleviate the situation, we expressed our readiness to support a humanitarian resolution at the Security Council. And then, we submitted one ourselves after the French and Mexican sponsors moved their humanitarian resolution to the General Assembly. We went into such detail on this in order to show you the real substance of the text that is before the General Assembly. It is also harmful, because it paints a false, one-dimensional picture of what has happened, and it ignores the reasons of the crisis in Ukraine and does not mention the role of Western countries in stoking it, who saw this country as people only as pawns in a geopolitical game against Russia. And I think that we will come back to this question following the end of our special military operation. With all of this in mind, I’d like to call on all right-minded countries who are not paralyzed by block discipline to not support the draft submitted by the Western countries. Against the backdrop of anti-Russian efforts of our Western colleagues, we note the initiative of our partners from South Africa, who submitted an alternative text actually very close to our humanitarian draft resolution at the Security Council. We understand the humanitarian focus of this draft. Colleagues, supporting the draft of South Africa is not only a signal to civilians in Ukraine that the UN is aware of the difficult situation they find themselves in and is trying to help them, it is also another opportunity to take a stance on the unprecedented economic and political pressure that the majority of you have been receiving in recent times from Western countries. I’d like to hope that the majority of our colleagues will make the correct and crucially independent choice. Thank you very much for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the situation in Ukraine is one which will mark our generation and generations to come. It is a war without victors, a war which should have never started, a war we should cease immediately. Let’s be clear: the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine is not the result of a natural disaster; it is man-made. It is the result of the blatant violation of international humanitarian law by the Russian Federation. This is unacceptable. Mr. President, what we see in the besieged city of Mariupol is heartbreaking. The victims of this violence are innocent people, first and foremost, women and children. There are three humanitarian crises unfolding as we speak. The first is, of course, the fate of the 40 million Ukrainians suffering inside their own country. They need our help. For our part, we will not give up on our brothers and sisters in Ukraine. As we speak, we are working in close coordination with OCHA and the ICRC on the issue of civilian evacuations in order to address the rapidly deteriorating situation in Mariupol. We also continue to support and facilitate UN aid operations launched from Turkey. Moreover, a Turkish team is stationed at this Red Border Gate on the Ukraine-Uruguay border to assess the humanitarian needs in Ukraine and to coordinate the ongoing aid operations. The second crisis: the 10 million Ukrainians who have, against all odds, managed to escape the horrors of war to seek refuge. As the host country to the largest refugee population in the world, we know what it means to flee the horrors of war. We can never make up for the pain they have endured, but we, the international community, must do everything we can to make their future better than their past. Today, representatives of our government, NGOs, and the Turkish Red Crescent are stationed along the border assisting the refugees fleeing Ukraine. Finally, there is an even larger humanitarian crisis unraveling around the world. There are already 291 million people who need humanitarian assistance and protection in 69 countries. Food and energy prices are increasing all over the world. There could be a serious food crisis soon. The developing nations of the world may have to face even more serious consequences as a result of this war. Dear colleagues, respecting the territorial integrity and upholding the basic principles of international law must be at the core of all our efforts. Ukraine is a sovereign, independent, and proud member of the international community, and it will remain so. Turkey is mobilizing all of its resources to implement an immediate humanitarian ceasefire. To this end, we have made a concerted effort to facilitate diplomacy. We held a trilateral ministerial meeting on March 10 in Antalya, Turkey. This was followed by the visits of the Turkish Foreign Minister Cevuşolu to Russia and Ukraine. However, these undertakings exceed the capacity of one country alone. The resolution adopted here at the General Assembly on March 2nd mandates the international community to address Russia’s aggression and its consequences. The UN cannot excuse itself from peacebuilding and focus solely on humanitarian intervention. Dear colleagues, one of the draft resolutions presented to you echoes the opening lines of the Charter of the United Nations. We, the international community, have a duty to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war. The peoples of the world have entrusted us with this responsibility. We cannot fail them. Thus, we ask for your support in adopting the draft resolution titled “Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine”, in the spirit of the founders of the United Nations, in our common quest for peace and respect for human rights, and in our shared duty to humanity. We must act now, for this is, in the truest sense of the words, a matter of life and death. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Japan.
Mr. President, several hours ago, Ukrainian President Mr. Zelensky described vividly the dire humanitarian situation in Ukraine in his online speech to Japan’s DAIT. Our heart goes out to all the victims and survivors, including children, women, journalists, and medical and humanitarian personnel. They must be protected. Japan is closely following the ongoing investigation by the ICC prosecutor in this regard. The draft resolution A/ES-11/L.2 is critically important. First, it calls upon member states to take actions to alleviate the severe humanitarian consequences in and around Ukraine. Second, it addresses what has created the severe humanitarian consequences. The draft resolution reiterates the demand for the full implementation of the General Assembly Resolution ES-11/1 of March 2, 2022, which deplores the aggression by Russia and demands that Russia immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraw all of its military forces from Ukraine. The humanitarian crisis will remain unless we address both its cause and consequences. I repeat, the humanitarian crisis will remain unless we address both its cause and consequences. Since the beginning of the aggression, the Security Council’s efforts to stop the unprovoked aggression by Russia have been vetoed. The resolution adopted in the emergency special session of the General Assembly demanded Russia to cease its use of force. The International Court of Justice has ordered Russia to immediately suspend the military operations, as demanded by the resolution. The Secretary-General has also called for Russia to bring its troops back to Russia. Mr. President, we have been witnessing a permanent member of the Security Council violate its obligations to maintain international peace and security and keep ignoring the calls of the main organs of the United Nations. We are at a critical juncture in upholding the rule of law and the United Nations Charter, and we must act by supporting this resolution, not the one recommended by the aggressor. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Japan. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Fiji, speaking on behalf of the Pacific Islands Forum.
Mr. Vice President, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. The Pacific Island Forum member states with presence at the United Nations in New York, namely Australia, Federated States, Micronesia, Kiribati, Nauru, New Zealand, Palau, Papua Guinea, Republic of Marshall Islands, Samoa, Solomon Islands, Tonga, Tuvalu, Kuna Watu, and my own country Fiji, register our deep concern at the unfolding humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. In the spirit of constructive engagement, we call on the Russian Federation to take every available measure to de-escalate the situation and return to a path of diplomacy in good faith. We welcome the dialogue between Ukrainian and Russian governments and call for an immediate ceasefire, safe and unhindered humanitarian access to affected areas, and the urgent withdrawal of military forces in accordance with internationally-recognized orders. The actions of the Russian Federation are violations of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and are inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. We are collectively shocked at the scale of the humanitarian crisis, which has already displaced more than 10 million people. We call on all parties to fully respect international law, international humanitarian law, and the international refugee law, and to uphold human rights. In particular, we call for protection of civilians, civilian infrastructure, medical facilities and personnel, and nuclear sites. We applaud the hospitality of Ukraine’s neighbors, who are welcomed; over 3 million refugees. We urge that civilians fleeing conflict be treated with dignity and without discrimination. We call attention to the particular and disproportionate risks faced by women, girls, and those with disabilities, and those requiring essential medical and social services during the conflict and the displacement. We are concerned equally by the spillover effects of this conflict, particularly heightened food insecurity, higher fuel prices, which are affecting lives, livelihoods, and security across the world, including in the Pacific and other regions. Our Blue Pacific relies on the rules-based international order that has promoted peace amongst our global family for over half a century. The challenges we collectively face today are numerous and will not be overcome without peaceful dialogue. Climate change, COVID-19, must remain at the forefront of our global efforts. Our actions must be guided by established rules and norms. We reaffirm the importance of the rules-based international order and recall the preamble of the UN Charter, which calls us to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war, and to reaffirm our faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in the equal rights of men and women of nations large and small. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Fiji, speaking on behalf of the Pacific Islands Forum. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Georgia aligns itself with the statement made by the European Union, and in my national capacity, I would like to add the following. Excellencies, we have gathered today- Excellencies, we have gathered today at yet another emergency session on Ukraine, this time to address the devastating humanitarian consequences that are unfolding in Ukraine following the Russian aggression. Following a month of unprovoked and unjustified war on Ukraine, where hundreds of innocent civilians have been killed, including more than 100 children, massive indiscriminate and targeting shelling of Ukrainian cities and towns have reduced the robbers, schools, kindergartens, medical facilities, and residential buildings, among others, and there are over 3.5 million Ukrainians forced to flee, to seek the shelter in the neighboring countries, and about 6.5 have turned into the internally displaced persons. These numbers already signal the looming unprecedented humanitarian disaster in Europe and beyond. Georgia strongly condemns Russia's unprovoked, unjustified, premeditated aggression against Ukraine in blatant violation of international law, the Charter of the United Nations, and the Helsinki Final Act. We call on Russia to comply with the provisional measures of the International Court of Justice of 16th of March that binds Russia, and I quote, "immediately suspend the military operations that it commenced on 24 February 2022 in the territory of Ukraine," unquote. According to OHCHR, most of civilian casualties recorded were caused by the use of explosive weapons with a wide impact area, including airstrikes, shelling from heavy military artillery, multi-launch rocket systems and missiles. Also, Ukraine reports the use of the banned phosphorus munitions. We're appalled by Russian forces' attacks on journalists and medical staff, and by the reports of rape, abductions, and executions, looting and robberies with acts of violence against local residents, and seizure of civilian housing. All of these actions are grave violation of international humanitarian law and amount to war crimes. These attacks must stop immediately. Humanitarian corridors and delivery of aid must be guaranteed for every civilian, for those who decide to stay, and for those who choose to leave. Dear colleagues, this aggression served as a major wake-up call for the international community. It is the fact that the patterns of Russia's actions and its scenarios against its neighbors are the same. Georgia experienced Russia's full-scale military aggression in 2008 with blatant violation of all international rules and norms. These pattern of behavior that we now see in Ukraine brazenly undermines the entire international rules-based order, poses great threat to regional and global peace and security, and are inconsistent with the ways how responsible states should act in the 21st century. Russia now plans to hold a fake referendum on creating the so-called People's Republic in Kherson, which echoes the bitter eight-year anniversary of Shem referendum organized in the Crimean Peninsula, serving at that time as a pretext for Russia's illegal annexation. In similar vein, on 12th of March, another so-called parliamentary elections were carried out in the Russian-occupied Apasya region of Georgia. Next month, on 10th of April, similar illegal venture is planned in another occupied region, Tshinvali of Georgia, all in blatant violation of principles of international law. And these so-called referendums and elections are null and void and serve yet another futile attempt to legitimize Russian illegal occupation, but we do see the pattern, the pattern that is clear and evident here. We urge Russia to cease aggression immediately, completely, and without preconditions, to withdraw all its forces and armaments from the whole territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, and to allow immediate, safe, and unfettered access to all international humanitarian and human rights actors and mechanisms. Also, we urge Russia to do same with regard to the occupied Georgian regions and fulfill its obligations under the ceasefire agreement of 12th of August 2008. Excellencies, the draft resolution before us today, A/ES-11/L.2, is a humanitarian plea of millions of Ukrainians who bear the brunt of devastation caused by the needless war. At the core of this draft resolution lies the resolve of the international community to appall the very principles of the UN Charter and the international law, with the primary objective to alleviate the suffering of the innocent civilians. With this spirit, Georgia, as one of the initiators and co-sponsors of this draft, calls on all of you to vote in favor of the proposed draft, to vote in favor of the principle, and in favor of the UN Charter. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Georgia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bulgaria.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement delivered on behalf of the European Union. I would like to highlight a few points in my national capacity. Mr. President, it is the second time in less than a month that we have found ourselves compelled together and to address as a matter of urgency the military aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine. Only this time, the picture is even bleaker. Since the early morning of 24th February, when the Russian Federation initiated this senseless, unprovoked, and unjustified military aggression against Ukraine, in complete violation of the international law and the principles of the UN Charter, the lives of millions of Ukrainians have been literally destroyed. In less than a month, more than 3.5 million people, mostly women and children, have been forced to flee their homes in Ukraine and to seek refuge in neighboring countries. An additional 6.5 million people have been internally displaced, and according to the International Organization for Migration, this is not the first displacement for some 13% of them. Since February 24, over 100,000 Ukrainians have passed through Bulgaria, and more than 50,000 people are currently seeking refuge. The tragedy is that these figures pale in comparison to the overall picture. To put it into perspective, for some countries in this room, 50,000 people constitutes their entire population or more than their entire population, and yet those numbers seem negligible. Yesterday, Bulgaria, together with Luxembourg and Jamaica, as co-chairs of the Group of Friends of Children in the SDGs and 90 other countries, launched a statement in support of the children affected by the war in Ukraine. This unspeakable war has caused the death of at least 75 children, and at least 99 have been injured. The immediate and long-term effects of the war and the psychosocial health, welfare, and development of children are of enormous magnitude and difficult to reverse. The Office of the UN High Commissioner of Human Rights reports 2,510 civilian casualties, of those 953 killed and 1,557 injured. And that statistic is already outdated, as the actual numbers are considerably higher and continue to increase as we speak. Those casualties have been caused by the use of explosive weapons with a wide impact area, including shelling from heavy artillery and multiple launch rocket systems, and missiles and airstrikes. The images of destruction are haunting. Less than a month ago, vibrant cities buzzing with life are now flattened. Critical civilian infrastructure is being indiscriminately and deliberately destroyed by the Russian forces. Hospitals are being shelled, thus causing even more suffering, all of which is being done in blatant violation of international humanitarian law. Even wars have rules, and the Russian Federation has been systematically violating them all. The humanitarian situation is being described as dire and further deteriorating, but those words do not do it justice. Reality is even worse. We cannot be indifferent, and we must all show unity in standing up for the principles of the UN Charter for international law and international humanitarian law. Bulgaria condemns in the strongest possible terms the unprovoked and unjustified military aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine, and demands that the Russian Federation immediately cease its military actions, unconditionally withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine, and fully respect Ukraine's territorial integrity, sovereignty, and independence within its internationally recognized borders. The use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Tensions and conflicts should be resolved exclusively through dialogue and diplomacy. This senseless war must stop now. International humanitarian law must be fully respected. Civilians, including humanitarian personnel and journalists, must be fully protected. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access of humanitarian personnel must be fully ensured, and safe passages for civilians should be allowed. I urge you all to support the resolution on the humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine. We owe it to the courageous people of Ukraine, but most of all, we owe it to ourselves. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, Italy aligns itself with the statement delivered by the European Union and wishes to make the following remarks in its national capacity. One month has passed since the Russian aggression initiated with the complicity of Belarus's unjustified and unprovoked aggression against Ukraine, against its sovereignty, against the integrity of its borders, triggering a level of humanitarian catastrophe that Europe has not experienced since World War II. Over these four weeks, we have seen a growing number of civilian casualties, including women and children, and millions of people fleeing their homes, internally displaced or seeking refuge in neighboring countries that are showing incredible and commendable solidarity. The war has extended to highly populated cities, where the use of explosive weapons is causing unbegable human suffering. We have been also witnessing the devastation of essential infrastructures, such as hospitals, schools, bridges, highways, and water systems, which will aggravate the condition of the civilian population for years to come. Notwithstanding this dramatic situation, and in total disregard of the appeals repeatedly made by the Secretary General and of the resolution adopted by the General Assembly on March 2, the Russian aggression continues to unfold, further challenging the basic principles of international humanitarian law. At the same time, the Security Council continues to be unable to address the situation in Ukraine, including its huge humanitarian consequences, due to the behavior of one of its permanent members, which happens to be the initiator and the sole responsible of this war. This is the reason why a cross-regional group of member states, including Italy, requested the resumption of this emergency special session. If the Security Council cannot act on such a fundamental question, the General Assembly has the right and the obligation to retake the initiative. To protect the civilian population in Ukraine, it is essential that Russia immediately stops this aggression, guarantees the safe passage of civilians, the unimpeded access to humanitarian assistance, and urgently and genuinely engaged in negotiations for peaceful resolution. These are the main contents of the draft resolution that a cross-regional group of member states has submitted to this meeting of the emergency special session, and that already enjoys the support of a high number of corresponding states. We trust that in face of this unbegable humanitarian tragedy occurring in the heart of Europe, the General Assembly will respond, as it did on the 2nd of March, with a great display of cohesion, sense of responsibility, and determination. And it should also be kept in mind that this war of aggression is seriously affecting food security in different parts of the world. This is the time to act without hesitation, reaffirming the imperative and ergo ominous character of international humanitarian law, while maintaining at the same time a clear and unequivocal distinction between the aggressor and the victim. Let me conclude, Mr. President, my intention, by reaffirming our full solidarity with the millions of people suffering from this war of aggression. Together with European partners and allies, Italy will continue to do its part in providing humanitarian assistance, and will continue to stand with Ukraine and its people. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Mr. President, as the conflict in Ukraine lingers on, the dire humanitarian situation in the region is further deteriorating. Brazil is deeply concerned with the growing reports of civilian casualties, including children, as well as the increasing flows of refugees and internally displaced people. During the efforts to alleviate the refugee crisis in Europe, Brazil quickly implemented a humanitarian visa policy for people fleeing the conflict in Ukraine. For the past weeks, our embassies in the regions have been granting special visas for Ukrainians and stateless persons, many of whom have already arrived in Brazil. Moreover, in response to the most pressing needs for humanitarian assistance, the Brazilian government has sent last week a donation encompassing water purifiers, around nine tons of food, and half a ton of medical items, totaling approximately 2,000 items. With the assistance of the Embassy of Brazil in Warsaw, the supplies were landed at that capital and delivered to Ukraine in coordination with the country's authorities. The international community must come to the assistance of the people most in need, not only those directly afflicted by the hostilities in Ukraine territory, but also the refugees in neighboring countries. Mr. President, there is no question about the immense human suffering and devastation caused by armed conflicts. Hence, cessation of hostilities is still the best way to minimize their humanitarian consequences. The conflict in Ukraine may also have a devastating impact on food security, disrupting food systems, and increasing the risk of hunger for the entire world, particularly for developing countries. Once again, Brazil reiterates its call for the immediate cessation of hostilities in Ukraine. Brazil is also concerned about the indiscriminate imposition of broad economic sanctions, whose negative impacts will affect all countries, putting additional hardship to already strained economies recovering from the pandemics. In the end, the most vulnerable will suffer the consequences of measures proved to be mostly ineffective. Mr. President, while the conflict is still ongoing, all parties must fully abide by international humanitarian law. Parties must always uphold the principles of distinction, proportionality, precaution, and humanity. Brazil encourages increased dialogue between Ukraine and Russia to agree on clear and concrete parameters to implement their obligations under international humanitarian law as a means to increase the safety of civilians and of humanitarian personnel. Civilians wishing to flee the hostilities must be able to do so in safety, and those who decide to stay cannot become targets of attacks. In the same vein, parties must grant safe passage to relief consignments to those in need. Brazil is deeply concerned with the impact of the conflict on the most vulnerable, including on reports about difficulties to evacuate people with disabilities. International humanitarian law aims to safeguard human dignity even in the worst scenarios of conflict. They are the bare minimum that should unite rather than divide us. The reasoning behind it is clear. No matter the causes of a conflict, once it erupts, civilians must be spared, the wounded must receive medical care, humanitarian assistance must reach those in need, and detainees must be treated humanely in all circumstances. The rules of war are not optional. When the lines between combatants and civilians become blurred, we risk seeing a rise in civilian casualties. civilian casualties, especially in armed conflicts fought in urban areas and when explosive weapons are used in these contexts. Civilians are being called to join the fighting, possibly with no proper training. Parties should strive to ensure the protection of civilians and of critical civilian infrastructure, no matter where hostilities are conducted. The reports of attacks on healthcare facilities in Ukraine resulting in dozens of deaths and injuries are particularly worrisome. Health workers and medical facilities have special protection and should not become military targets. Mr. President, the General Assembly has once again been convinced to address a pressing situation of a threat to international peace and security with dire humanitarian consequences. The United Nations must act responsibly and in a meaningful way. We should strive to act together towards measures that will have a meaningful impact on the ground and that can lead to a lasting peace in Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Thank you, Mr. President. After our last meeting earlier this month, it is disheartening that today we again have to meet to address the deteriorating humanitarian situation in Ukraine. As we speak, millions of innocent civilians are caught in the crossfire, trapped between bleak options of having to leave their home or trying to survive in increasingly dangerous and dire conditions. Many civilians have already had to pay the ultimate price. In many parts of the country, basic public services are no longer available. Key infrastructures are being destroyed at an alarming pace. It will take years and tremendous amount of resources to rebuild. Mr. President, the world is looking to the UN to take action, to help alleviate the suffering of the innocents, to save lives. We have the responsibility to send a clear and united message to all parties. First, they must bear no efforts to stop the war. They must take immediate steps to de-escalate, stop the hostilities, and establish a sustainable ceasefire. Second, international humanitarian law must be respected, including its provision regarding protection of civilians and civilian infrastructures. Humanitarian assistance must be given, access to all people in need in all areas without exceptions. Safe passage must be guaranteed, civilian wishing to leave and evacuate from Ukraine must be facilitated. Third, dialogue and negotiation must be intensified. Lasting peace will only come from the negotiating table. We have to collectively push for dialogue and peaceful solution. Anything short of this objective will only worsen the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. Mr. President, many have pointed out that the situation in Ukraine is on a scale that is not seen in Europe for decades. Its humanitarian ramification has been devastating. While war in its nature is divisive, the question for us today, can we be united in this august body to address the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine? Or will we allow ourselves to be divided and let our differences take the better of us and stand idle while many are suffering? For Indonesia, the answer is crystal clear. We want the General Assembly to maintain its unity and take a united action to help address the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. After all, the UN is the global body that have the comparative advantage to address humanitarian crisis. Anything less will only further reduce global trust and respectability of the United Nations. It is time to put humanity beyond and above political differences and work towards the ultimate goal to end the war and the suffering and to achieve perpetual peace in Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Indonesia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Thailand.
Mr. President, Thailand is greatly concerned by the ongoing humanitarian crisis in Ukraine and is deeply saddened by the loss of innocent lives and destruction of property and civilian infrastructure in Ukraine, as well as by the plight of affected civilians, including those who have fled neighboring countries. We call for the respectful and the protection of civilian life and infrastructure and for the facilitation of access to humanitarian assistance to those affected within and around Ukraine without discrimination on any basis and without politicization. In this regard, Thailand calls on all parties to fully comply with their obligations under international humanitarian law and international human rights law, and underscores the need for all actors engaged in the provision of humanitarian assistance to promote and fully respect the principles of humanity, neutrality, impartiality, and independence. Thailand reaffirms our commitment to support the international community to alleviate the consequences of ongoing humanitarian crisis in Ukraine, which has already been challenging due to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. On our part, Thailand has provided humanitarian assistance, including food, medical, and other essential supplies to the affected civilians through the Ukrainian Red Cross Society. Additionally, the Thai Red Cross Society has also provided financial contribution to the Ukrainian Red Cross Society in support of the ongoing humanitarian operations, as well as raising funds from the public for the Ukrainian Red Cross Society's relief activities. Mr. President, escalation of the situation will only cause wider impacts, including humanitarian consequences in Ukraine and around the world. Thailand therefore welcomes and encourages continued efforts at bilateral talks between the concerned parties, looks forward to their fruitful outcomes, especially to help ameliorate the pressing humanitarian situation, and hopes for the peaceful settlement of the situation. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Thailand. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Dominican Republic.
Many thanks indeed, Mr. President. We are meeting here today, member states of the United Nations. Microphone for the speaker, please. Trapped in this conflict are millions of people, men, women, children, older persons, persons living with a disability. These groups are those that pay the highest price in this deeply regrettable situation. They pay with their suffering, with their lives, their future, and their psychological well-being. They're paying for our inability to spare them this suffering, and they're paying for our inability to prevent the fracture of their lives and dignity. The Dominican Republic feels entirely confounded by the fact that today we have two draft resolutions on the table. In spite of our indignation, today we will take a decision based on principles and keeping our focus on the millions of civilians that need protection by the parties to the conflict. With this in mind, allow me to make the following observations. First, it is vital that we see observed without delay and without conditions all the rules governing the conduct of hostilities contained in international humanitarian law. It is vital that we move towards the search for a negotiated solution which will restore peace in Ukraine. And when a cessation in hostilities is not viable, rather, all necessary measures must be taken to avoid human suffering. These include and must include humanitarian access to affected civilians and must include the refraining from attacking civilian infrastructures such as hospitals, schools, and electric and water infrastructure. Mr. President, any and all people trapped in an armed conflict are vulnerable and suffer. However, there are those that are more vulnerable than others. Women, children, older persons, and internally displaced persons are particularly at risk. However, those living with a type of disability deserve and require our immediate attention. Cooperation between all actors on the ground is vital so that we can protect these people. We must do so by facilitating their movement or evacuation to safe places, and we must guarantee that their medical and care needs are met. To conclude, Mr. President, it is with deep sorrow that we affirm that if this conflict continues, its humanitarian consequences will extend beyond Ukraine's borders. Both the Russian Federation and Ukraine produce around 25% of the world's wheat and grain supply. Many countries depend on this supply, and the impact of the conflict on food security of citizens could quite simply be devastating. Let us not allow this to happen. Let us not increase this suffering. On the contrary, let us not allow the situation to continue escalating. Let us not allow this conflict to be responsible for millions of people who already suffer food security descending into the abyss of a famine. Many thanks, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Dominican Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Albania.
Mr. President, 24 February, 23 March, already a month into the Russian aggression in Ukraine, and the devastating situation needs no description. Figures are staggering. 12 million people are stranded in affected areas, directly exposed to insecurity, and many of them completely cut off from basic supplies, including food, water, and medicine. This represents more than 25% of the entire population of Ukraine. 10 million people have been displaced from their homes. Over 3.5 million, otherwise 100,000 per day, have fled the country, 90% of them women and children. 2,500 civilian casualties, knowing that in conflicts such figures are much higher. Massive and indiscriminate bombing campaigns have reduced entire cities to ruins. Residential areas, homes, schools, hospitals, theaters, commercial areas, everything is a target. Mariupol, the new Aleppo, has become the true face of Russia, a permanent member of the Security Council that has awarded itself a license to kill civilians and destroy cities. Dear colleagues, we know that Moscow's initial blitzkrieg plans have been derailed by the Ukrainian resistance. Ukrainians with their resolve and conviction know what they are fighting for. Russian soldiers, in their disbelief, do not know what they are dying for. Let's not forget, this is not a war of Russians against Ukrainians. This is a war of one man in his own seclusion and who, by his reckless actions, has managed to generate in a few weeks the biggest ever solitude and world isolation for his own country. History has seen more than once failed efforts by strongmen to rewrite history, but with their crimes only ending up being their epitaph. Dear colleagues, this war fueled by hubris, narcissism, and paranoia is systematically, methodically, and cold-bloodedly devastating Ukraine. The massive refugee crisis is a serious and profound challenge to Europe. But this cynical blackmail is doomed to fail, just as the one on West Berlin failed in 1948. Yet this crisis is affecting the entire world, especially the developing countries. The very sharp rise of prices of basic commodities because of the war is making the poor, poor, the vulnerable, more vulnerable. No one can call this an unintended consequence because it was known. This is what Russia is further inflicting to Ukraine and to the world. Dear colleagues, Albania has co-sponsored this draft resolution on aggression against Ukraine. We wish it could be implemented to help protect civilians, but we doubt if approved, and I hope we will, that it would be respected by Russia. It is hard to believe that a country that has blatantly broken every rule in the Book of International Law will fall for the text which it has undermined in the council and is trying to undermine here. This is why we need to show again what we stand for, support a text that spells clearly why we have this situation, what needs to be done, and by whom. A text that has only one definition for aggression: aggression. Dear colleagues, we know that no future can ever be successfully built while living in the past. Therefore, make no mistake, if Russia succeeds in this illegal war, we all have been warned. The line will not be drawn at Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Albania. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Poland.
Mr. President, distinguished delegates, Poland fully supports the text of the resolution submitted by Ukraine on the humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine. We align with the statement delivered by the European Union, and would like to complement it with our national perspective. Humanitarian situation in Ukraine is deteriorating at an alarming scale. UN OCHA estimates that 12 million people are expected to be in need of humanitarian assistance, which means that almost 30% of the entire population of the country will require aid. People trapped in Ukrainian cities are in need of urgent humanitarian assistance. The sole actor responsible for this disaster is Russia. Distinguished delegates, one week ago, Russian forces dropped a bomb on a theater clearly marked as a civilian object sheltering children, where hundreds of civilians were seeking safety in the besieged city of Mariupol. This is a clear manifestation that Russia, the liberty, creates humanitarian catastrophe in Ukraine and blatantly disregards the principles of international humanitarian law. Within the last days, we are witnessing brutal and inhumane tactics of the Russian army aimed at terrorizing the civilian population by indiscriminate attacks on civilians and civilian infrastructure, depriving them even of access to potable water and electricity. Poland condemns in the strongest terms attacks against civilians and civilian objects such as schools, hospitals, orphanages, and critical civilian infrastructure. These acts constitute grave breaches of the Geneva Convention, of which 196 countries, including Russia, are parties, as well as serious violation of laws and customs applicable in an international armed conflict. These acts are war crimes under international law. We must not remain silent. By voting in favor of the draft resolution presented by Ukraine, we voice support for immediate cessation of hostilities and ensuring humane we voice support for immediate cessation of hostilities and ensuring humanitarian access. That is what we, as the international community, are obliged to deliver. Since the beginning of Russian invasion, the OCHA CHR has reported almost 2,500 civilian casualties in Ukraine, including 925 persons killed. Real numbers are likely much higher. It must stop. By voting in favor of the draft resolution presented by Ukraine, we voice support for immediate cessation of hostilities and ensuring humanitarian access. This is what people in Ukraine desperately need. This is what we, as the international community, are obliged to deliver. Distinguished delegates, the humanitarian consequences of the ongoing war brought by Russia on Ukraine are not limited to Ukrainians in their home country. As a neighbor and close friend of Ukraine, we in Poland see firsthand the dramatic humanitarian consequences of the Russian aggression against Ukraine. Every day at the Polish-Ukrainian border, we witness constant inflow of people who enter Poland, severely traumatized. Since 24th of February, already more than 2.5 million were forced to leave Ukraine as a result of Russia's military aggression, out of which 2.2 million fled to Poland and most of them found shelter and stayed there. In the spirit of solidarity, Poland will continue to admit and provide shelter, food, healthcare, and safety to every person in need, regardless of their nationality, race, or religious creed. We have registered already 170 nationalities on our border. The consequences of Russia's invasion on Ukraine are being felt in almost every country around the globe. It affects Ukraine, it affects Europe, it affects us all. Distinguished delegates, the resolution submitted by Ukraine focuses on urgent humanitarian needs and expresses support for the efforts of the United Nations and humanitarian organizations to provide help to the Ukrainian people and further demands a cessation of hostilities and urges humanitarian access. It also reflects on the broader consequences of the war, including the food security worldwide, in particular in least developed countries. Moreover, it contains strong language on the need for the protection of all civilians fleeing the war without discrimination, including foreign nationals, notably students. We call on each member state to stand firmly behind the resolution on the humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine and vote in favor. This is the text that was elaborated together with and agreed upon by Ukraine, thus respectful of the particular needs of the country most concerned. As a member of the cross-regional group of countries who worked on this resolution, Poland would like to emphasize that we have ensured an inclusive and transparent process. We are convinced that by supporting this resolution, we demonstrate our support to the people of Ukraine who are facing dramatic humanitarian consequences of the war brought on them by Russia. Seventy-six years ago, this assembly decided that we are determined to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war. At the moment, we are failing. Every day, more people are being killed, including children. Hundreds of thousands remain trapped in besieged cities, very often without access to water supply and medicine, with food supplies close to running out. It is our obligation to act now by voting in favor of the resolution presented by Ukraine, and thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Poland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Chile.
Mr. President, Chile reiterates once again its total condemnation of the Russian Federation's invasion of Ukraine. Since the historic special session of this general assembly, which began on the 28th of February, the situation on the ground has worsened dramatically and we're seeing even the use of new missiles with staggering destructive capacity. Moreover, we've seen an increase in the bombing of hospitals, schools, and residential neighborhoods in which civilians could still be found. Mr. President, Chile supports and has co-sponsored the resolution entitled "Humanitarian Consequences of the Aggression Against Ukraine". This resolution focuses on the devastating humanitarian consequences that we're witnessing. We're co-sponsoring this resolution because that is what we're being asked to do by the civilian victims of the cruel land and air attacks waged by the Russian Federation. International law, and international humanitarian law and the human rights doctrine signal to us the instruments to be used in cases such as that we're witnessing in Ukraine. The resolution submitted to a vote indicates which instruments would be appropriate for use in situations such as these. These include interalia, the cessation of any attack against a civilian population, the most robust protection possible for civilians, including humanitarian personnel, journalists, and persons in vulnerable situations, including women, girls, and boys, and the protection as well of medical material and personnel, their means of transport and of hospitals. Moreover, such instruments include guaranteeing the security, dignity, human rights, and fundamental freedoms without any type of discrimination, both on Ukrainian territory and the territory of those countries in which refugees have been sought, of all persons fleeing the conflict and the violence regardless of their status. Measures also include the total condemnation of any and all act manifestation or expression of racism, racial discrimination, xenophobia, and forms of intolerance against persons on the move, including refugees. We must also ensure security guarantees for humanitarian corridors. Mr. President, today, as an international community, as human beings, we have the responsibility to protect the civilian population and to protect the civilian population affected by this conflict, which is the fruit of an act of aggression, and we must guarantee humanitarian aid for them. Consequently, we thank all member states that are today hosting the more than 4 million people that have been forced to abandon Ukraine as a result of this conflict. Before concluding, my country wishes to reiterate its appeal to all parties to continue conversations. Once again, we urge the peaceful and immediate resolution of the conflict between the Russian Federation and Ukraine. This solution must be found through political dialogue, negotiations, mediations, and other peaceful means in accordance with international law. Many thanks, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Chile. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We welcome the reconvening of the emergency special session on the situation in Ukraine. Three weeks ago, this assembly issued a clear call with respect to the aggression against Ukraine by an overwhelming majority. It asked for the immediate cessation of hostilities as well as the complete and immediate withdrawal of all troops from Ukraine with a view to creating the necessary space for genuine diplomacy as well as a credible and fully inclusive peace process. The reaction of the Russian Federation shows a complete disregard for the multilateralism embodied in the decision of this assembly and of the order of the International Court of Justice of March 16th. Not only has it failed to heed the unequivocal call from this assembly, it has engaged in further military escalation. Mr. President, in Ukraine, we see in the starkest possible terms the axiom that whenever war begins, war crimes follow. The aggression committed against Ukraine must therefore remain front and center in our discussions as we address its consequences, as well as the individual criminal responsibility it entails for persons in leadership positions. Incalculable suffering has been visited on Ukraine since this assembly last met. It is not only that the civilian population has borne the brunt of its impact, civilians have increasingly been targeted by the Russian Armed Forces in blatant violation of the most fundamental principles of international humanitarian law: military necessity, distinction, and proportionality. A large part of the civilian population has been forcibly displaced as a result. The onslaught on Mariupol is particularly appalling and eerily reminiscent of the notorious assault on Aleppo in its indiscriminate attack on civilian infrastructure and the infliction of mass civilian casualties as a method of warfare. Mr. President, all of this extends far beyond the discussions we are engaged in today. It is a frontal rejection of multilateralism that this assembly embodies and that is so urgently needed to address other challenges of our time, from fighting climate change to overcoming the devastating impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and inequalities exacerbated by it, to addressing humanitarian and other emergencies in all parts of the world. The people of Ukraine are the primary victims of this war, but its impact is already felt around the globe. The attack on a major agricultural producer will be devastating for global food security. The forthcoming growth in military expenditure will make for a more dangerous world. There will be massive fallout on agendas that were already in a fragile state before the aggression against Ukraine, from the abolition of nuclear weapons to achieving the STG's. All of this cannot be undone in its entirety but the effects can be mitigated by one measure, an immediate end of the invasion as this assembly has requested. Mr. President, in response to the aggression, there has been an unprecedented way in which governments and private actors have come together to stand up for the fundamentals of the post-World War II order. This is a positive takeaway if we can apply it to other challenges in the future. The resolution this assembly passed on March 2nd has resonated in a powerful manner around the globe. This assembly has proven its ability to act decisively when the charter is under threat. The present crisis can be a defining moment for this assembly and its ability to show leadership that will be required with respect to other challenges. Mr. President, this organization has extensive experience in the area of humanitarian assistance, including in the most difficult of circumstances. This assembly and other relevant UN bodies have set the ground rules for the delivery of humanitarian assistance. The relevant rules defined in international humanitarian law are universally accepted. Nevertheless, we are called upon today to ask for these rules to be respected. Among other things, the granting of safe passage in both directions for those fleeing and for those delivering humanitarian aid, the protection of civilians at all times and under all circumstances, the prohibition of the attack on critical civilian infrastructure at all times, and the absolute prohibition of illegal weaponry. Mr. President, we support the effort reflected in the resolution before us to uphold core humanitarian objectives in the context of its call upon the Russian Federation to cease hostilities against Ukraine. We have therefore co-sponsored resolution L2 before this assembly and hope that this assembly will vote with an overwhelming majority in support of it. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Slovenia aligns itself with the statement delivered by the European Union and I would like to make the following remarks in our national capacity. Mr. President, this is not the time to turn a blind eye to the humanitarian tragedy of millions of people of Ukraine. We, the international community, must act now in unity and mobilize all resources and efforts to stop military aggression of the Russian Federation on Ukraine and its people that has created an unprecedented humanitarian crisis. Mr. President, indiscriminate shelling, bombing of civilian targets and infrastructure constitute grave violation of international humanitarian law. Respect for the protection of civilians, especially those most vulnerable, as well as humanitarian and health workers, lie at the core of international humanitarian law. There should be no impunity for any violation of humanitarian and human rights law. Accountability needs to be ensured. Slovenia supports the investigation and prosecution of crimes committed, including the crime of aggression, both at the international and national level. Growing refugee crisis calls for our solidarity and immediate action. Genuine humanitarian corridors allowing safe transit of humanitarian aid in and affected people out of harm's way must be established effectively, unconditionally, and safely. Neighboring countries and their citizens are doing a remarkable work in helping the fleeing people and we thank them for that. Slovenia has already accepted refugees and stands ready to assist further. Borders must be open for everyone fleeing the war. Mr. President, in terms of humanitarian aid, Slovenia will continue to provide assistance to Ukraine and Ukrainian refugees as well as financial assistance to OCHA, UNHCR, CARITAS, ICRC, and others. Mr. President, this is not just a humanitarian crisis in Ukraine and Europe. We are facing global consequences for millions of people at risk of food insecurity. We have to scale up our support to UN bodies with mandates relevant to food security. Mr. President, we call on the implementation of the resolution adopted by an overwhelming majority on the 2nd of March in this assembly, which in its strongest terms deplores Russian aggression against Ukraine, demands the immediate withdrawal of its troops from the entire territory of Ukraine. Today, it is urgent to support and vote for the resolution on humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine, which calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities by the Russian Federation and for protection of civilian population, including those fleeing war without any discrimination. Resolution accurately reflects the situation on the ground and calls for the respect of the UN Charter and international humanitarian law to be respected. We stand ready to assist further. We stand with Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Slovenia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ecuador.
Mr. President. Excuse me, says the speaker. Diego is the name of the Ecuadorian student of 20 years of age that arrived in Ecuador yesterday fleeing the shelling, the explosions, and the tragedy sparked by the military aggression against Ukraine. Diego took shelter in a bunker and learned to live from day to day in the midst of a conflict which was alien to him. He's also a living witness of the fact that the special military operation is nothing other than a clear invasion of Ukraine, of its people, and an act of aggression against the United Nations Charter. Around 700 Ecuadorians, including Diego, were successfully evacuated by my government in three humanitarian flights since the beginning of the war, which has plunged humankind into mourning, mourning in which it has stayed for a month now. The Ukrainian friend of Diego was not as lucky. He was not able to cross the border. And every one of these 700 Ecuadorians that we've been able to evacuate knows a family, a mother, a father, a son, a daughter, that continues to live with the specter of destruction and death hanging over them. And despite the fact that my compatriots that are today safe and sound will never forget the ordeal they went through, they're also all acutely aware that their suffering and pain in no way compares to the suffering and pain that the military aggression is inflicting upon the people of Ukraine in honor of all of the evacuated foreign students and in honor of those who stay, as well as in honor of all of the Ukrainian people and in particular, in order to equip the international community with one more tool, Ecuador joined the key proponents of draft resolution L2. proponents of draft Resolution L2, whose sixth operative paragraph reads, and I quote, "The assembly demands that all parties protect civilians fleeing armed conflict and violence, including foreign nationals, notably students, without discrimination, to allow voluntary, safe, and unhindered passage." The statement that I made exactly one month ago before this General Assembly calling parties to dialogue, de-escalation, and a diplomatic solution was pulverized only a few hours later when the first bombs fell. How many times did we hear in the Security Council and in statements made to the media that there wouldn't be an invasion? The denial that military attacks would be waged, to a certain extent, limited the possibilities for safe evacuation, and consequently, we saw the exacerbation of the impact on the civilian population, and this impact is growing ever graver, day by day, minute by minute. Today, I am attending this meeting because Ecuador believes that all is not lost. We still can and we must achieve an immediate cessation of hostilities, just as is called for by the resolution in its second operative paragraph. Indeed, this is also what's called for by common sense and our ethic responsibility as human beings. This morning, the permanent representative of Japan clearly stated that the grave humanitarian situation in Ukraine would continue if we do not tackle the root causes and grapple with the essence of what's happening. The draft resolution of an interregional group that Ecuador is co-sponsoring does just that. It tackles the causes and consequences of this devastating humanitarian crisis. For these reasons and in light of all of the above, Ecuador will vote in favor of the draft contained in Document A/ES11/L2, which already is co-sponsored by at least 83 delegations. It calls upon, and we call upon rather, all delegations to do the same. I also invite delegations to remain united before the international community and to honor the role and authority of this assembly in light of the efforts to revitalize the General Assembly, which year upon year see as call for the non-duplication of work in resolutions presented. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ecuador. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Costa Rica.
Mr. President, as we speak, the streets of Ukrainian cities are being used as a battlefield. Homes, hospitals, schools, community centers, and even nuclear power plants have become military targets. Millions of Ukrainians have left their homes to head towards neighboring countries, while at the same time, many remain trapped and are desperate for safe passage. They have no food, no water, no heating, no electricity. But they have hope. We are their hope. The Russian invasion of Ukraine is devastating for Ukrainian civilians, and the longer the aggression lasts, the deeper its repercussions will be in Ukraine and beyond Ukraine's borders. Consequently, as an international community, we must reiterate our appeals to the Russian Federation to cease its hostilities against Ukraine. The resolution that we will adopt offers a welcome approach to the required civilian protection in the devastating invasion of Ukraine. It underscores the need to protect those who have been forcibly displaced. It underscores the need to protect noncombatants, including journalists and humanitarian workers, among others. Costa Rica apports all provisions relating to the protection of the civilian population and civilian infrastructure. The protection of civilians is a fundamental obligation of the United Nations. The conduct of hostilities is the driving force behind civilian suffering. The use of cluster munitions has devastated entire neighborhoods of Ukrainian towns and cities, and their effects will reverberate for decades because unexploded bombs are scattered everywhere. We must preserve critical infrastructure such as water, gas, and electricity systems. These systems, for example, provide dwellings, schools, and medical facilities with vital supplies of water and electricity. Protecting such infrastructure includes protecting it against attacks waged by new technologies and cyber attacks. Humanitarian damage arising from the use of explosive weapons is devastating, and has made it patently clear that we must avoid using weapons of this time because the civilian population and the protection of them and civilian infrastructure is crucial because civilians are those that most suffer their impact. Consequently, the upcoming process to enshrine the commitment to avoid the use of wide-area explosive weapons in populated areas is an opportunity for all states to demonstrate their support for the strengthening of international law and for the strengthening of civilians. We cannot forget that the humanitarian repercussions of this crisis and the war are broader than we might think. They include famine and food insecurity. And this is facing countries which cannot afford interruptions to their food supply. Thirty percent of wheat and barley exports come from Ukraine and Russia. Millions of people in countries affected by conflicts such as Yemen, Ethiopia, and South Sudan are already on the brink of starvation, and they're now facing an even more devastating reality if these exports interrupt. By putting an end to its aggression against Ukraine, the Russian Federation can avoid a global catastrophe. Mr. President, with the adoption of this resolution, we will take a step forward. However, our work is far from over. We must identify the best possible way of repairing this most recent tear in the cloak of credibility, which continues to cover parts of our multilateral systems. This is a tear with grave implications for the millions of people living in violence and who suffer abuses and violations of their human rights and food insecurity, both in theaters of conflict within and beyond Ukraine. Many thanks indeed.
I thank the distinguished representative of Costa Rica. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Croatia.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues. Croatia aligns itself with the statement of the EU, and I would like to add some remarks in my national capacity. It was over 30 years ago when the Croatian city of Vukovar looked like Mariupol today, but scars remain. These scars remind us daily of the importance of preventing such tragedies from repeating. We should all unite to prevent further sufferings in Ukraine. The first step is to support a resolution submitted by Ukraine. Co-sponsor it and vote for it. Colleagues, it is not about resolutions. It is not about words. It is not about votes. It is about people, the people of Ukraine, who are under attack. They did not deserve it. They did not provoke it. They were targeted because they wanted to live free and equal as their big neighbor. Just for wanting to live free and equal, they are now being cruelly punished. Ukrainian sovereignty and territorial integrity have been violated. Ukrainian people are being killed and maimed, displaced and stabbed by the occupying Russian forces. It is the minimum of decency and compassion with the victims to acknowledge their sufferings and to help the 10 million displaced and others in need. It is clear that the humanitarian consequences of this conflict have impact beyond the borders of Europe, which is recognized in the part of the resolution which addresses the impact of the conflict on food insecurity. In Ukraine, no one is too young or too old to become a victim. Civilians were attacked from the newborns in maternity hospital to elderly in the nursing home. There is no place to hide. There is no safe haven. Schools, hospitals, theaters, and shopping malls have all been targeted. In this sense, it is important that the resolution we are adopting today is focused on top humanitarian priorities and that it is action-oriented. The resolution calls for immediate cessation of hostilities, protection of civilians, including foreign nationals without any discrimination, as well as protection of civilian infrastructure, humanitarian access, and respect of international humanitarian law, international human rights law, and refugee law. It is our responsibility to protect population of Ukraine. Putting an end to the attacks on civilians is not only about our moral duty, it is also about our commitments and the international law, human rights and humanitarian law, as well as international criminal law. Deliberate targeting of civilians as well as indiscriminate attacks against them are not only morally repugnant, they constitute war crimes, and if committed in a widespread or systematic manner, crimes against humanity. We should therefore support all efforts to establish accountability for crimes committed in Ukraine. They are important for providing justice to the victims, as well as for the prevention in Ukraine as well as elsewhere. We welcome the International Court of Justice's order to Russian Federation to immediately suspend its military operation. Obeying this legally binding order issued by the principal judicial organ of the United Nations would end all humanitarian problems right away. Yet, so far, Russian Federation chooses to ignore it. We urge Russian Federation to comply with it, suspend its military operation, and end humanitarian drama in Ukraine. Dear colleagues, ignoring the UN Charter, international human rights and humanitarian law, as well as direct order of the International Court of Justice, where does it lead us? Do we want our children to live in a world where there is no rule of law, where mighty is right, and in a constant fear of weapons of mass destructions? The time to act is now. Otherwise, we may not have another opportunity. The world, as we know, is falling apart. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Croatia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
Mr. President, there is one reason and one reason alone why there is a humanitarian disaster in Ukraine. The reason is the Russian Federation. This humanitarian disaster is the direct result of the unprovoked, unjustified, and illegal invasion of Ukraine by Russia. And the greatest and the most immediate improvement to this humanitarian disaster will come not from more money, or better coordination, or more access for NGOs. As important as all those things are, the greatest and most immediate improvement to this humanitarian disaster will come from the immediate withdrawal of Russian forces from Ukrainian territory. Mr. President, that's why any meaningful resolution on the humanitarian situation must call out Russia by name. Russia has to stop its invasion. Russia has to get out of Ukraine. Mr. President, plain speaking and honesty are the very least the millions of suffering Ukrainians deserve. Colleagues, let's support a resolution that demonstrates that we stand in absolute solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Mr. President, Russia's actions have caused immense human suffering. Australia is particularly distressed by the plight of the most vulnerable, including women, children, people with disabilities, and the elderly. That's why the Australian government will deliver $65 million of lifesaving assistance through trusted partners to address the needs of those who need it most. And we will continue to work in lockstep with our international partners to support Ukraine and its people as they continue to face abhorrent threats to their lives, their families, and their livelihoods. And Australia was proud to be part of the Pacific Island Forum statement delivered by Fiji this morning. Mr. President, we again call on Russia to immediately withdraw its forces and uphold its obligations under international humanitarian law. We are appalled by reports of Russia's indiscriminate attacks on civilians. Russia must allow the safe passage of civilians from Ukraine and safe access for the provision of humanitarian assistance. And we condemn actions by third parties that would enable and facilitate Russia's invasion, including through economic, military, and political support. Australia will continue to impose travel bans and targeted financial sanctions to inflict heavy costs on those who bear responsibility or hold levers of power in Russia and Belarus. And it's just so important that we acknowledge the generosity of neighboring countries that are hosting refugees. We are one with you as you continue in your support for the people of Ukraine. And finally, Mr. President, Australia pays tribute to the remarkable resilience and the remarkable courage shown by the Ukrainian people. Colleagues, this resolution is the only resolution in which Ukraine has been involved in the drafting. By co-sponsoring or voting for this resolution, we give meaning to the principle of nothing about us without us in regions beyond our own. In this way, we can all say, Ukraine, we stand with you. And to our distinguished colleague, the permanent representative of Ukraine, we stand with you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Australia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
New Zealand thanks the President of the General Assembly for resuming the emergency special session to consider the humanitarian situation in Ukraine. New Zealand associates ourselves with Pacific Island Forum statement delivered earlier this morning. We are saddened by the urgent and somber circumstances under which we meet. We are alarmed to see the thousands of civilian casualties and the millions who have been displaced by Russia's unprovoked and unjustified attack on Ukraine. We are deeply concerned by the We are deeply concerned by the disproportionate effects that this conflict is having on women and girls, children, the elderly and persons with disabilities. The scale of this crisis demands a strong and effective response from the General Assembly. For this reason, New Zealand co-sponsored the resolution introduced by Ukraine this morning. We welcome the resolution's highlighting of the impact of the conflict on women and children. We also welcome that the resolution clearly identifies Russia's invasion as the cause of the severe spike in humanitarian need. It is a matter of fact. Russia ignored international law when it invaded Ukraine. Russia is violating international humanitarian law every day this conflict continues. Civilians are not targets. Civilian infrastructure is not a target. Medical facilities and personnel are not legitimate targets. Cluster munitions and chemical weapons are banned. Threats to use nuclear weapons are morally reprehensible. As Russia's accomplice Belarus shares responsibility for this humanitarian crisis. We commend those who have stepped up to provide humanitarian support. Ukrainian and international humanitarian organizations are providing lifesaving humanitarian assistance. Ukraine's neighbors have generously welcomed millions of civilians that have been forced to flee. The UN system has quickly scaled up its response. Aotearoa, New Zealand, is assisting international humanitarian efforts. We have made an initial contribution of $6 million to the humanitarian response and we expect to provide further contributions. However, we are concerned that Russia's actions are stretching the global humanitarian system to its limit. Resources and attention are being diverted away from other crises. Russia's choice, and yes, it was a choice, to invade Ukraine is reverberating far beyond the immediate region. Production and distribution of basic foodstuffs are already being disrupted, bringing acute stress to countries already on the brink. Higher food, fuel and fertilizer prices will exacerbate already vulnerable situations. No country, big or small, with or without a veto, should be allowed to act with impunity when it violates the basic tenets of international humanitarian law. President Putin's actions represent a grave breach of international law and the UN Charter. Russia must be held accountable. As a longstanding proponent of peace and reconciliation, New Zealand calls on Russia to act consistently with your international obligations. Urgently de-escalate the conflict by ceasing military operations in Ukraine. Take all possible steps to protect civilians, provide humanitarian actors with access and guarantees of safety that they need and engage sincerely in diplomatic negotiations as a pathway to resolve this conflict. Ultimately, the grave humanitarian situation in and around Ukraine will be resolved only by a full cessation of hostilities. New Zealand encourages member states to act together and vote in support of the resolution, humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine, to show what we stand for as a community, the community of the United Nations. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of New Zealand. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Czech Republic.
Mr. President, the Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU statement and wishes to add the following in its national capacity. There are hardly any words to describe the dire humanitarian situation in Ukraine these days. It is simply beyond appalling. The brutal conduct of war by Russia in a blatant disregard for all conceivable international norms and international humanitarian law has resulted in untold suffering of innocent civilians and widespread destruction of civilian infrastructure. Russian rockets and bombs regularly hit civilian sites, including residential buildings, hospitals and schools. Russia's indiscriminate shelling of cities, including Kiev and Kharkiv, has no military logic but to terrorize the civilian population. On the 5th and the 6th of March, Russia bombed humanitarian corridors in Mariupol while civilians were trying to use them. On the 16th of March, Russia bombed and destroyed a theater in Mariupol which was used as an air raid shelter by hundreds of people, mostly women and children. Also, earlier this month, the rocket attacks on the Kharkiv city centre killed at least 10 civilians and ruined the central Freedom Square, including the building of the Kharkiv Regional Administration and the Czech honorary consulate. The suffering of civilians in the besieged city of Mariupol is of historical proportions. The Russian siege of the city has prevented emergency supplies from reaching those in need and damaged energy and water infrastructure. People trapped in the city, including elderly and children, are unable to leave, in many cases freezing and without access to food and clean water. In the occupied areas of Ukraine, Russian soldiers use force against the local unarmed civilians who only wished to have their voices heard against the Russian occupiers. Mr. President, I could go on and on giving you examples of all the countless atrocities and violations of international humanitarian law committed by the Russian armed forces. But let me draw your attention to the single most important fact here, and that is that Russia is a party to four Geneva Conventions, the first additional protocol, and Russia is also bound by customary international law. Russia must respect its international obligations and observe all the existing binding rules, including the obligations to protect civilians, civilian objects and infrastructure. It is incumbent upon Russia to ensure the safety of hospitals and medical workers. There is also no excuse to intentionally block relief supplies. It is also imperative to respect and protect humanitarian workers, allow and facilitate the work of humanitarian organizations, including a safe passage of humanitarian convoys, and enable safe humanitarian corridors for civilians. We applaud and pay tribute to the humanitarian personnel on the ground. That is why we cannot stress enough the paramount importance of observing the rules of international humanitarian law in this conflict. Let me also point out that any violation of international law entails responsibility under international criminal law. It is most appropriate that the ICC has launched its investigation into the situation in Ukraine. Impunity for crimes within the ICC's jurisdiction, including war crimes, is unacceptable. Mr. President, due to the Russian military aggression, the humanitarian situation in Ukraine is becoming increasingly critical. The humanitarian needs of civilians are urgent and our ability to deliver humanitarian assistance is severely complicated and limited. Millions of people are fleeing Ukraine, putting neighboring countries under enormous pressure. Given the vast humanitarian challenges, we support a more comprehensive response to the current humanitarian and refugee situation. Mr. President, in all this suffering and destruction, there is a rare ray of hope. And it is the upswell of solidarity the neighboring countries have shown, welcoming with open arms all those fleeing the war-torn Ukraine. My country, the Czech Republic, counts proudly self among these. The Czech Republic and its people stand shoulder to shoulder with Ukraine and we have provided an unprecedented level of support. The people of the Czech Republic have welcomed and provided shelter for more than 270,000 refugees from Ukraine. Around 250,000 of them have already been granted a special visa status that gives them access to healthcare, social protection and labour market. The Czech Republic has been providing humanitarian and development assistance to Ukraine continuously since 2014, and we will continue to do so. Mr. President, in light of all that I have said, the Czech Republic welcomes the resolution on the humanitarian consequences of the aggression against Ukraine, and we will vote for its adoption. Dear colleagues, facts matter. People in Ukraine are suffering because Russia has waged a brutal war of choice in a blatant violation of international law and the UN Charter, further undermining international security and stability. One cannot hide from the simple truth of who did what. The Ukrainians are defending their homeland while their homes are being burned down, women, children and elderly getting killed or forced to flee. We have to face up to the undeniable truth that Russia's aggression has caused untold suffering. Moreover, this war continues to have ripple effects around the globe, including increased food security and skyrocketing energy prices. Dear colleagues, I would like to urge you to vote for this resolution. Vote yes in order to make a stand against all this senseless violence and suffering. Please vote yes to send a clear message that human lives matter and civilians should not be targeted. But let me make one additional point. After all, this is not a complicated matter. I mean us trying to navigate the intricacies of international humanitarian law or trying to cope with the difficulties of setting up humanitarian corridors. Because one man can easily end all this suffering and bloodshed. Just the same way it all started, Russia should pull back all its troops and let Ukrainians go about their lives, let children return to their classrooms, give peace a chance again. Our vote today is fundamentally about the expression of the global conscience that all this suffering and bloodshed should end once and for all. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Czech Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic.
President, once again, this August, International Assembly is seeing an exploitation of human rights issues in order to create a state of polarization and politicization, used to serve the political interests of some. Indeed, some states are mixing questions on the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine with their hostile political position against the Russian Federation. The request for a resumption of this emergency special session and the introduction of the Franco-Mexican draft resolution to the General Assembly, which was an introduction which was initiated at the Security Council and without a vote being held on it at the council, this clearly shows that these states are in no way interested in resolving humanitarian issues in Ukraine. But they want to pass through hostile positions against the Russian Federation by putting forward an erroneous one-dimensional vision of reality. The delegation of South Africa was careful to present a draft resolution that exclusively focuses on the humanitarian aspect, which is something that we welcome. This is a constructive approach. And we call on all states to consider this objectively. President, we share with all member states a commitment to protect human rights and to provide humanitarian assistance to all regions affected by conflict. However, and in the same vein, we reject any politicization of humanitarian issues. And we reiterate the need for humanitarian operations to be implemented according to the principles of neutrality and non-discrimination. My country, Syria, has suffered over the last 10 years and continues to suffer from flagrant politicization and shameless manipulation and hypocrisy. When we talk about humanitarian issues that my country has faced. My delegation welcomes the efforts made by Russia regarding the humanitarian aspect during its special military operation in Ukraine. Russia has provided humanitarian assistance in various forms to civilians besieged in Ukrainian cities and who are being used as human shields. Russia has ensured humanitarian points of passage to guarantee the safe passage of civilians towards the destinations of choice without any discrimination at all. President, to conclude, we reiterate the importance that for states who claim to be concerned with human rights should treat all displaced people equally, whether they are within Ukraine or abroad, and ensure humanitarian access that is swift and safe, including for foreign nationals who are in Ukraine, and they should facilitate their and they should facilitate their return home without delay or without discrimination. I thank you very much, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore.
Mr. President, exactly three weeks ago, on the 2nd of March, the General Assembly voted overwhelmingly in support of a resolution deploring Russia's aggression against Ukraine. That resolution, which Singapore supported, made clear the international community's position on the inviolability of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. The resolution also demanded that the Russian Federation immediately cease its use of force against Ukraine and completely and unconditionally withdraw all of its military forces from Ukraine. Mr. President, it is time to implement the resolution now. The resolution we adopted three weeks ago also urged the immediate peaceful resolution of the conflict between Russian Federation and Ukraine and emphasized the need for all parties to comply with their obligations under international humanitarian law. The terms of the General Assembly resolution not only remain valid, they have become even more critical now in the context of the unfolding humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. We call for the full and urgent implementation of the General Assembly resolution that we have already adopted. Singapore is gravely concerned at the continuing and escalating violence and attacks by Russian military forces on Ukrainian cities, civilians, and civilian infrastructure, such as schools and hospitals. We are profoundly saddened and distressed at the reports of the growing number of civilian casualties, especially women, children, and the elderly. We call on the Russian Federation to cease its offensive military operation immediately and to remain engaged in negotiations with Ukraine and work towards a peaceful settlement in accordance with the UN Charter and international law and in accordance with the General Assembly resolution we adopted three weeks ago. The unfolding humanitarian crisis in Ukraine needs to be stopped and stopped immediately. The international community's priority now must be the immediate cessation of all hostilities so that lifesaving humanitarian aid and assistance can be provided on the ground to all those in need. In this regard, Singapore commends the efforts of the United Nations and other organizations such as the ICRC that are working tirelessly on the ground despite the dangerously challenging and life-threatening circumstances. We call for the safe and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to Ukraine and all those in need. Singapore reiterates its full support for the sovereignty, political independence, and territorial integrity of all countries, including Ukraine. And we urge continuing diplomatic efforts towards a peaceful resolution of the conflict that will bring an end to the grave humanitarian crisis that we are witnessing now in Ukraine. I thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Thank you, Mr. President. The United Kingdom welcomes the reconvening of the emergency special session on the crisis in Ukraine. Since the General Assembly last met just over three weeks ago, Russia's premeditated and unprovoked war in Ukraine has caused a humanitarian catastrophe. Over 3 million refugees, including 1.5 million children, have fled Ukraine. Another 6.5 million have fled their homes within Ukraine. Over 12 million people require humanitarian assistance. And as we heard from the Secretary General yesterday, many other countries are paying a heavy price. A global food, energy, and economic crisis is setting in, which alongside COVID-19 risks further undermining the SDGs and creating a wider humanitarian catastrophe. President Putin's war against the Ukrainian people is the sole cause of this crisis. Bombs fall on scared children. Mariupol is under medieval siege. Innocent families have been without food, water, or power for days. Essential civilian infrastructure has been targeted from the beginning, with 62 attacks on healthcare facilities, as confirmed by the World Health Organization. The UK is doing our part to support the Ukrainian government and people as well as its neighbors. We have donated over £400 million of aid for necessities and medical equipment. The people of Ukraine are looking to the United Nations for humanitarian assistance, for an end to the war, and to defend the principle of territorial integrity and the UN Charter. We can send a united message. We can help the people of Ukraine. We can condemn Russia's invasion and we can reinforce the founding principles upon which the United Nations was built. We can support a resolution which is already backed by 86 cosponsors from across all regions. The UK will vote with Ukraine. We urge others to do the same. Let me finish by echoing the Secretary General's appeal to the Russian Federation yesterday. How many more Mariupols must be destroyed? Continuing the war in Ukraine is morally unacceptable, politically indefensible, and militarily nonsensical. It's time to end this absurd war. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of France.
Mr. President, France calls upon the Russian Federation to put an end to its aggression against Ukraine, which for a month has killed civilians, including children, medical personnel, and journalists. The cities of Kyiv, Mariupol, and Mykolaiv, like so many others, are besieged and mercilessly shelled by the Russian army. It is a massacre and the worst is yet to come. 10 million Ukrainians have been forced to flee. More than 3.5 million of these are now refugees in neighboring countries. France commends the solidarity which the European Union and European states are demonstrating to provide basic goods to refugees and to host them. The entire world is affected by this war. It is contributing to increasing the risk of food insecurity and famine throughout the world. Developing countries will be the first affected. It is for this reason that France proposes stepping up international coordination to guarantee supplies and to build resilience. The utmost priority is an immediate cessation of hostilities and ensuring the full respect of international humanitarian law. The protection of civilians, in particular the most vulnerable among them, is an utmost imperative. The lives, integrity, and future of children must be safeguarded. Civilian infrastructure, including hospitals and schools, must be protected. Humanitarian access must be guaranteed. As a matter of the utmost urgency, France commends the mobilization of the international community, the United Nations, and of humanitarian actors who all must meet the needs of people in all theaters of crisis, ranging from Afghanistan to Yemen, including South Sudan and Haiti. Mr. President, for three weeks, France and Mexico staged discussions in good faith on a draft resolution to the Security Council to call for a cessation of hostilities and for the respect of international humanitarian law. The humanitarian situation has but worsened since then and several states have shared with us their desire to participate in our efforts. It is for this reason that we transferred our initiative to this General Assembly. The draft resolution introduced this morning by Ukraine is the fruit of an inclusive process and it reflects a balance taking account of the proposals made by countries from all regions. There is an urgent need to act to reach an immediate cessation of hostilities. This is the only alternative to protect people. No one will emerge victorious from this war. Only the end of the Russian offensive will stop us from losing yet more still. The General Assembly must continue to shoulder its responsibilities, as it did on the 2nd of March. It must make Russia hear reason, renounce the use of force, respect the United Nations Charter, respect the Geneva Conventions, and protect civilians. To support the draft of France, Mexico, and of so many other countries is to support the protection of the weakest among us, to support solidarity between peoples, and to support the journey towards peace. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of France. We have heard the last speaker on this item for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers this afternoon at 3:00 PM in this hall. The meeting is adjourned.